Ready to call the donut?
What time is it? Oh, seven.
Welcome to the Littleton Planning Board. Tonight, we have three hearings, so we'll get started right away. And first item will be roll call. That's loud. Board member Bertlein.
Here.
Board member Bolt.
Here.
Board member Duzan.
Here.
Board member Elrond.
Here.
Board member Graham.
Here.
Board member Moore.
Here.
Board member Renicki.
Here.
Board member Samuelson.
Here.
And board member Schrader.
Here.
You have quorum. All right. The next item will be approval of the minutes. We have two of them. First one is from October 14th. We do them one at a time. Does the board have any comments, changes, revisions? If not, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, this vote to approve the minutes for October 14th. Yeah, if you weren't here, you wouldn't vote.
Do I vote with someone?
No. Okay, votes passed. The second set of minutes is the study session, actually. Wednesday, October 16th. This was the continuation of the ComPlan study session. Are there any comments on these minutes from October 16th? Okay, have a motion.
Motion to approve the minutes of October 16th.
Second?
Second.
Okay, vote. Now, we have scheduled, well, we don't have any scheduled appearances, so we have the unscheduled portion of the evening. Is there anyone present tonight who'd like to address the board on a topic other than the hearings that we're going to address? Okay, seeing none. Moving quickly right into the public hearing. The first public hearing, let me just outline so that everybody here knows quickly upfront. The first public hearing is a recommendation to the city council of an amended amendment to the comprehensive plan replacing the following sections. Preface introduction, accomplished policies of continued importance, community-wide goals and policies. And then, for those who are interested, after that, we have an ordinance related to floodplain regulations, and then following that is an ordinance related to codes concerning breweries, distilleries, wineries, and emissions. So with that, and also, I just want to say real quickly before we turn it over to Glenn, I will be using the clock tonight just because we do have multiple hearings, so we want to keep things moving during the public testimony, so.
Mr. Chairman, let me just give you the list of folks who do want to speak. So as you mentioned, this is an amendment to a portion of our comprehensive plan. I won't get into a whole lot of detail because I think Dennis did that back on the 14th. But right off the bat, what we tried to do is, starting with the cover, at least try and make this a little bit more understandable, that this doesn't completely replace the current comprehensive plan. This is an amendment to a portion of it. And just to remind you, this is, you receive your powers and duties through the code, and the code states that "The board shall recommend to the city council comprehensive plans to guide the future growth and development within the city, which includes land use, streets and transportation, parks, open space, pedestrian circulation, and urban design." So there's a simple policy question for the planning board. Should the planning board recommend the citywide plan as an amendment to the comprehensive plan? Staff says yes. I'll get into that in a little bit more detail. So again, to try and clarify a bit what you're being asked to do tonight, you're being asked to replace a portion of the contents of this document, and that would be the preface and the introduction, and the accomplished policies of continued importance, and then the community-wide goals and the community-wide policies. And we're asking you that that gets replaced with this. And as we talked about in a lot of detail, all the neighborhood plans are still as they always were, and they'll still be in effect. So you'll still use those neighborhood plans if you get a zoning case tomorrow. That would still be the document you would look at to make sure it's consistent with the comprehensive plan, as well as the citywide goals. And as we mentioned, we, our goal is to go through the complete comprehensive plan and all the small area plans in much more detail, but we're not there yet tonight. Just to remind you, this has been a year and five months that we've been working on at least this portion of the comprehensive plan. And at the last study session, I pointed out that since just in this year, in January, the planning board has had seven study sessions where we talked about in detail the wording of the various policies and goals in the citywide comprehensive plan. You've had two joint meetings with the city council where we also discussed your draft and some of the concerns that the council had. And then, of course, on October 14th, we had a public hearing and we took public testimony. So on October 14th, we heard from, I think, about a dozen residents, and they had a number of concerns, and I've just very briefly laid them out here, I think, and you'll probably hear more tonight, but I think there's a concern that there needs to be additional public outreach now that the plan is out. We did put it out, I think, the Wednesday before the October 14th meeting, so it's been out there a couple of weeks. We have made some minor changes from your study session on October 16th, and we put that up last Friday. I think there's a lot of concern that there's not a lot of detail in this plan, and I think that's by design, because this is the 30,000-foot level look at the comprehensive plan, and your implementation is really through those small area plans and your zoning code and how you apply that zoning code. So I think there was a concern from the planning board that we have exactly the right amount of detail in this document, and I would agree. I think you don't want too much specificity, or you're going to run into conflicts. And there was a feeling that we should better define certain concepts. We talk about a sustainable economy, livability, density, diversity, progress, private-public partnerships, smart streets, which I think we've changed now hopefully to complete streets. And we did actually define diversity and complete streets, but I think the planning board had some concern that if we get into too much definition of these concepts, we lose kind of the flow of the document and the flexibility of the document. There was concern about what are the tools to implement. I think we've addressed that in, that I'll get into a little bit further. A resident asked that we actually develop some new zoning districts, and I think that's a great idea, but generally use your comprehensive plan as that policy foundation for creating new zoning districts, so perhaps that'll come forward in the future. Annexation was questioned. Where can we annex? We're kind of a built-out community, and I think it was pointed out that there is room for the city to grow outwards, as well as within. The city can grow as well. And there were a lot of concerns about some of the examples from Fargo, North Dakota, for instance, that perhaps we should be a little bit more Littleton-specific. I think we've done a good job in eliminating, I believe, all of those pictures that were from outside Littleton, so we took that to heart. There's concern about maybe we need to address senior housing, and I think you amended one of your policies to do that. The plan should promote frequent updates. I don't know that we've actually stated it, but I think it's probably a consensus that we don't want to wait another 31 years to amend the comprehensive plan. So it might be something you consider, that this will be revisited every five years or something along that lines. There was a concern raised that where we talk about updating or redeveloping floundering commercial shopping centers, that we shouldn't just focus on retail uses, and quite frankly, I think we were, but that there's other uses that can go into these shopping centers. In fact, I think you had before you an ordinance amendment to allow breweries and distilleries and wineries as potential other users within these shopping centers, but they could also be a church, which our zoning code allows as well. And then again, I think getting back to the point that this needs to be a little bit more detailed, needs to be more of a implementation document, there was a recommendation that there be objectives added to the goals and policies, and that they be smart objectives, which are specific, measurable, achievable, realistic, and timely. And again, I think when we get into the neighborhood plans and we get down to that detail, that's exactly where those kind of objectives ought to land. So one of the, we had about 26 proposed changes by the planning board. One of them was, there was concern, there were a couple of concerns. How does the, all the other plans we have out there relate to the comprehensive plan? And that would be the economic development plan, I think specifically we talked about, but the bicycle pedestrian plan would be another example. We have council goals that are on the wall. How does this kind of tie into the comprehensive plan, and how does that relate to the decisions you'll be asked to be, to make, and the city council? So we put this graphic together. I hope it does what it's supposed to do, but it shows that the comprehensive plan is really your guiding document for making land use decisions or quasi-judicial decisions. If you're changing zoning on a specific piece of property, you're approving a subdivision, you're approving a conditional use permit for a specific use in a specific location, or doing a plan development overlay, you have to do that consistent with the comprehensive plan. Now, the comprehensive plan certainly is influenced by now moving to the right, all those other documents, such as the economic development plan, the council goals, the bike and pedestrian plan, and all of those, the comprehensive plan and all those goals really should be a part of your consideration when you're making administrative decisions, which for council could be approving the budget, approving the capital facilities plan. For the planning board, you may be asked to make a recommendation on a code change, and in fact, you are on a couple of cases on tonight's agenda. So this is kind of the graphic. Hopefully, it speaks to you, that I think it worked from the staff standpoint, of kind of describing where the comprehensive plan fits into your decision-making authority. Now, I know there was a recommendation that we zero out this table, and I'm sorry, but I couldn't figure out under its current format how to do that, but I guarantee you, we will do that for household size. So it's not in your draft tonight, but I promise you, we will fix this before it goes to city council. Then there was a number of changes in the maps, and we did get those map changes made. Actually, it was late this afternoon, so it will be in the draft that's up on your dais today. I know specifically there was concern about Bowles and Platt Canyon, and I think it was the site of the water facility. I think we showed it as agriculture, and I think now it's being showed as a public use. It's been developed for the Wenecque Water Treatment Facility. I can't think of Denver Waters Facility there at that intersection. And there might have been some other changes to the map, but I believe all those have been made. This is the consultant's redo of the corridor plans. I know you felt that they were perhaps too specific. Quite frankly, I thought they would be a little bit more graphic than this, but they've tried to be a little bit more flexible in showing those corridors, whether it's the Santa Fe Corridor, or Littleton Boulevard, or Broadway Corridor. But I think it's much better than your first draft. And then generalized zoning. One of the changes, I think, that I remember was the Marathon Property. As you know, we did a minor amendment or amendment to that plan development, and so this is showing it being split between commercial and residential uses. The other thing that the, we discussed on the 16th is how do we evoke kind of a priority to all these other plans that we know we need to amend? So we changed the right-hand column to priority for update or creation of these new plans. We took our best shot at how that would work, and we used a similar mechanism that we used in the downtown plan, where we kept it somewhat flexible, because things change as far as budgets and time allowed for these projects. But what's a high priority, what's a medium priority, and what's a low priority? We showed the high priority is the, some of the corridor plans and the station area plans, because again, as I mentioned, there are some federal dollars that we have to commit to, so we think perhaps right out of the gate, those perhaps would be the high priority. Then certainly the neighborhood plans, and then I think the only low we have is the downtown plan, which you adopted about a year ago, or maybe a little longer than a year ago, but certainly that's up to date. So one of the things that is a little different is we did give you a resolution, so we are asking that you move to approve that resolution, which forwards a positive recommendation on adopting of the comprehensive plan amendment. And again, that replaces the sections of the current ComPlan that include the preface, the introduction, accomplished policies of continued importance, and the community-wide goals and policies. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the board might have.
Any questions?
If we have minor edits, is now the time, or is later the time to offer them?
You might want to listen, I guess, take your public testimony. Now, one thing, yeah, I didn't really point out, is if there is something that you want to, you could actually condition the approval on some of those minor amendments, or if you want to list them out, it's really up to the board, but we'd be happy to take that down and make sure that changes before it goes to city council.
Some grammatical errors, there's also some punctuation errors. I probably got about 15 of them, and that's probably having gone through it with a fine-toothed comb.
Right.
I suppose we can wait on that, but.
Yes, now, I also went through it today, so perhaps the one sitting at your dais doesn't have those mistakes. I hope I caught them all, but if not, we'll certainly take that down. I also have the whole plan here electronically. If it helps to pull up a page, we can do that.
Any other questions? Glenn, there was a graphic that you had that showed the correlation between the other, either small area plans, but the corridor studies, et cetera, on how they relate to how we make a decision. Is that incorporated in this ComPlan somewhere?
Yes. Yes, it's towards the end, but yes, it's absolutely in there.
Okay. I apologize, I was out of town over the weekend. I haven't read through the entire thing.
Oh, one of the other things we did want is kind of a statistical background or grounding, and so we've added that to the appendix. We kind of, we called it a dashboard, so a number of, I think, key statistics for the city has been included as well. Here's the graphic.
I found it out. Thank you.
I have a question. On the land that's shown as vacant, why is it shown vacant versus what it's zoned as?
Ah, because the current land use is exactly what it is today. So it may be zoned for commercial, but if it's vacant, it's vacant on that map.
Okay, even if it's not commercial, if it's something else?
Right.
Okay.
Right. Well, I just spent two minutes, and several of my edits haven't been corrected yet. I think we need a fresh pair of eyes looking at this document for editing. I've repeatedly asked for a professional editor to look at this document, not to change the intent, but to just look at grammar, repetitive sentences, punctuation errors. They're still there.
I'm sorry, I thought we caught them all.
No, not even close. Also have, I mean, it gets picky, but we have a type size that changes throughout the document in the same sentence. It's just, you know, those are common things that happen when you're editing a document. Somehow, something gremlin sneaks in and changes the type size, but it would take $200 or $300 to have this thing professionally looked at one final time. Now, whether that's going to happen before, if we vote for it, whether it happens before council or not, that's another matter, but still needs it. Anyone else? Okay, thanks, Glenn. So I have one page of people who would like to testify or talk, so if you're not on here, you'll have an opportunity when we're done to come up also. I will set the timer. It runs for about four and a half minutes, so we're not going to do the 10-minute thing we did last hearing, but you know, we'll kind of play it by ear, but we will try to keep it more like four to five, somewhere in there. So what I'll do is I'll let you know, just hand signal, or you'll see the red light. So first one would be Carol Brzecki. No, I didn't say that right. I didn't say that right.
Not even close. I'm Carol Brzecki. I live in the 4th district. People are still talking about the last meeting, and what a nice meeting it was when we actually had a real chance to express our views, and I do appreciate it. Tonight, I've decided not to comment on the content of the citywide ComPlan. I just don't think it'll be productive. Rather, I would like to explain to you the impact this document has on citizens. I will use your words from your October 16th meeting describing the plan. Someone stated they liked the generality of the new plan. We are visionary and not specific. Document is vague and open to interpretations, which would offer the planning board the flexibility to defend their position. I see the ComPlan as I see the charter. It's my protection from my government. And what you are offering with a document that is so vague and open to interpretation offers absolutely no protection for the citizens whatsoever. You will leave this board, and new members will come, they will be seated, and the plan will be open to their interpretation. It may not be the same as yours, and most likely, it won't be. You have no background or foundation information in your document that would provide some reference and some structure for the future planning board members and the future council members. You've created a document that allow for anything that comes forward. It will be a battle of words. Both the developer and the planning board will be using the same words to support and oppose an application. You have not protected the citizens with the vagueness, lack of specifics, and the generalities of this plan. You have set up a scenario that breeds distrust of everyone involved in land use decisions. The old plan provided more protection than this new draft. I heard about the Golden Plan at the last meeting. I got a copy and I read it. It's fabulous. It has a lot of elements that we could use in Littleton. I also downloaded Lewisville's plan, and again, there's a stark difference between what they have and what we have. When you really take a look at the plan that you have provided, and you remove all the maps and all the pictures, that's what you have. It's five pages. There's still a lot of white. That's Lewisville's plan. It is as comprehensive as a document I've ever seen. It's specific. It protects the neighborhoods. It protects all the suburban area, the urban area. They have a more difficult task in front of them, because they have to take their goals and apply it to an urban area and a rural area and a suburban area, but they do it, and they do it beautifully. There's the Golden Plan. Again, very specific, very action-oriented. Each one of their strategies, which is what, I think, they had a whole lot of community outreach. It was very different from ours. I would say that it was, they did twice as much for a population half of what we have, and it took them a long time to do it, but it was very citizen-driven. It wasn't staff-driven. But at the end of each one of their goals, they have how it needs to be responded in the way of a land use. So each one of their goals, they have the strategies, and then they say, in case of a land use, it will be evaluated according to this criteria. You're in a quasi-judicial situation, it would seem to me. I think of a quasi-judicial as a court. When you go into court, you're battling law, something very specific and concrete. You're going to be in a quasi-judicial situation, and you're going to be dealing with a very vague, general, not specific, open-ended, open-to-interpretation document. I don't see how it's a win-win for anybody. If we were in Golden and I was an applicant, what that applicant has to do is go through their ComPlan, and they look to see where it says, "Land use cases shall be evaluated according to the following considerations." And then they have specifics for each one of their goals, so when an applicant, before they even take the first step, they know very clearly what they need to do in order to bring something to the Golden that's going to be acceptable. We don't have that.
30 seconds.
I understand that you were given a task to update the old ComPlan. This is a rewrite. It's not an update. If it really can be used to promote and support any application and used to oppose any application, what have you really accomplished? Thank you. I don't mean to denigrate you. I honestly don't. I know it's hard work. It's tough. I've watched a lot of your meetings, but I think you've missed the mark. I don't think it's your fault. I wish the community had more say over staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jeanie Erickson. Speaking in front of the public is not my forte. I get very, very nervous, but I think this is a very important topic, so that's why I'm out of my comfort zone and up here again. First of all, I'd like to thank all of you for your service and dedication by serving on this board. I can see that it is very time-consuming, and that you must care about Littleton as much as I do, for as much time as you spend on the many important issues in the town that I call home. There are two things that I found that I'd like to speak about tonight because of the time constraints. There were many, many things I wanted to speak about. Number one is under chapter two, Citywide Plan, number nine, strengthening downtown by B, increasing housing diversity and densities to help enliven the streets and support the stores and restaurants. The citizens of Littleton do not want any more high-density apartments downtown. I thought we may have learned some lessons from Broadstone on that. I do not think it is the responsibility of downtown citizens to do all of the supporting of downtown Littleton, and putting high-density apartments in downtown does not guarantee those people would shop there. During the Broadstone debate, we found out during a survey that sales tax revenues when fifty-one fifty-one and the apartments behind Aspen Grove were built, it did not create any new increase in sales tax revenue. However, when retail opened, there was an increase in sales tax revenue when new retail opened. Also, citizens didn't want high-density apartments in downtown during Broadstone, and putting that possibility in the new comp plan will not make them want them tomorrow, next month, or even next year. If the merchants in downtown Littleton need more customers, perhaps the problem that needs to be addressed is one of parking. And the question has to be asked, if they didn't think they could draw enough customers by locating in downtown Littleton, then why did they come there? The answer is not more people, but more retail. The other item I wanted to talk about was under policies, encourage, number seven. Underperforming properties to be redeveloped so that they provide a sustainable mix of uses are designed to mitigate possible negative effects on adjacent uses. Who determines that properties are underperforming? A property owner can definitely control the outcome if he wanted to. For instance, if we are talking about a strip mall with many sites, he can refuse to let the tenants renew their leases, therefore vacating the site, making it look like everyone is moving out, when actually they have been kicked out. This doesn't actually mean the commercial site is a bad place for retail. The comp plan is a vision of what the citizens of Littleton want their city to look like, now and in the future. I plan on living the rest of my life in Littleton, and I care about what it looks like for the future generations also. This document and the words that are used are so important because we don't want the words to be used against us and for the developers, who do not have a vested interest in our city. We do not want to be taken advantage of by big developers. Please take your time to get this document right for the future of our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Bingham?
Good evening, Planning Board. My name is Paul Bingham, two thirty-six West Delaware Circle in Littleton. I've lived there fifty-five years, and then, I'm not lived there fifty-five years, that's a lie. I've lived in Littleton fifty-two years. I'm sorry about that. Two points, actually three points. Thank you upfront for the work you've put into this thing so far. I think you're making great progress. First point I want to make is, all of these corridor studies need to be a part of this comp plan, and I think, based on watching your October sixteenth meeting, you folks agree with that. I just wanted to reemphasize that again. It's really important from a legal standpoint. The second point I'd like to make is that we folks in the general public would really like to have some more time with this thing. It showed up on Friday with the changes not flagged in any way, so it's taken us a while to go through the whole thing and understand it. And for Mr. Rudnicki's sake, I know two editors that we could turn loose on this thing. Thank you all for all your hard work, but gently turned loose.
Thank you. Don Burns?
Chairman Doosan and Planning Board members, I'm Don Burns. I live at seventy-three thirty-two South Costilla Street. It's my pleasure to address you again, and I appreciate all the hard work you do writing a plan. It's hard work to write a good plan, so I empathize with you. I want to just add some things to what I said earlier. Your desire to have the citywide components avoid going beyond your shared vision begs asking whether this thirty-thousand-foot perspective as expressed by the city planner provides sufficient direction for the follow-up plans. Although the draft uses the word strategic, there doesn't appear to be anything particularly strategic about a plan that makes no decisions and forecloses no options, even from a citywide perspective. The Mark Horwath, who wrote this book, founder and president of the Strategic Thinking Institute, defines strategy as "the intelligent allocation of limited resources through a unique system of activities to outperform the competition in serving the customers." He advises that strategic thinking requires us to think not about how we're better, but about how we are different in ways that customers value, and that strategy is always developed in pursuit of goals and objectives. It's good to see that the draft mentions some of Littleton's distinctives, but doesn't the citywide component also need to specify how the small-area plans will go about sustaining or distinguishing a small-town, neighborhood-friendly, and open-space culture if we are to have any hope of sustaining it? If the draft is to provide citywide direction for the ensuing small-area plans, at least two important pieces appear to be missing. One is specific intended end results, and secondly, specific policy directives are required to achieve them. And what's in the draft now as policy statements or goal statements are really pretty broad, that Littleton should have dynamic, outdoor, connected, and distinctive character, yet there's nothing to ensure that the important vision statements on the left-hand side of page two-one will in fact be achieved. And then the statements listed later on in the draft look more like broad actions than genuine policy, and thereby they leapfrog a more definitive policy framework. The draft also seems to place mutually contradictory terms side by side as if its authors didn't know they were. So for example, on page two-one, it's good to see the state, this page state that the vision for Littleton's future is to respect and build on its history, but across the same page, it states that increasing the quality of community and economic development will raise the bar. And why is raising the bar more important than keeping what makes us special? Or for example, I'm glad to see that the draft states that Littleton will foster its small-town, family-friendly character, but the desire to transform, as stated across the page, contradicts that great vision statement. How can we expect it to believe that the transformative change will in fact sustain our community's distinctive character? At the October sixteenth study session, and I appreciate having so much having to have the chance to sit in on that and listen to the dialogue between the board and the city planner, but I was alarmed to hear the planner explain that this section was added for marketing purposes, and to hear him say, quote-unquote, "We all know that Littleton's future facilities, open space, et cetera, are going to be different." So this all seems disingenuous at best and deceitful at worst if the draft fails to chart a definite course of action. So if the citywide component fails to set an objective stage for what follows, you leave us guessing. Do you really intend to maintain Littleton's distinctive, small-town, and open-space-friendly neighborhoods that the residents prize, or is this plan just a facade to serve corporate business interests bent on lining their own pockets and transforming Littleton for their own gain? So part of me says you can't do that, but I know you can, and that's scary because in fact, you could end up leaving us like everybody else around us. So we really need that strategic thinking, not about how we become better, but rather about how we are different in ways that we, as your citizen customers, desire and whom you're pledged to serve. Thanks very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
This is a great book, by the way. I've used it professionally.
Writing it down. How'd I do on that one?
Yeah, I got the mom right.
Got the Karen right.
Your comments?
Consonant vowel, unless I wrote it wrong, it's Matusik. Fifty-six oh eight South Lowell Boulevard. And I will say that I have not read the whole revised plan. I just found out basically that this was the second go-around, and that the plan was to get it to the city council on election night, and that just seemed kind of suspect to me. I understood that Glenn said they've been working on this for a year, but it kind of looks like the actual public gets about one month worth of consideration, and this latest draft occurred last Friday morning. So I think, given everyone has a busy schedule, you know, to expect the public to even know about a new draft revision on a Friday, read, understand it, and be ready to speak on it on Monday evening seems kind of unrealistic and rushed. I too agree with several other speakers. The changes seem to be very vague. They don't address, you know, worsening traffic issues, like forty minutes today from Platte Canyon to Santa Fe on eastbound mineral, forty minutes just to go from one major street to another. And that's just going to get worse. So I didn't see anything in there that talks about what the city has in mind to mitigate and control access, you know, in and out of the city, since the majority of people seem to be working outside who live here. What I request from you is that you vote against the plan as it stands now, and vote to extend the schedule, you know, add and amend sections, putting some placeholder areas in for future issues like the traffic issue above. You know, how is the city going to attract high-paying jobs, which require the well-educated workforce that Littleton possesses? What are we going to do about offering some housing for citizens looking for maintenance-free, one-level homes, not high-rise apartments, who want to be active in the city they've lived in for forty or fifty-plus years? I believe you can extend the schedule, you can give the staff a list of what our concerns, the public's concerns are, and list it from them how much time it would take to specifically answer those in some concrete detail rather than vagueness, and reach out and educate the public more on what these planned changes will mean to those of us who live in Littleton and want to stay in Littleton. Thank you.
Thank you.
I am going to ask for the projector. I wore something vaguely Halloween-ish, not just because Halloween is coming up, but because, I want to echo, I'm frightened of this plan. I think it leaves us open to development that will destroy Littleton's character and destroy its distinctiveness in the Denver metro area, as previously mentioned, and how about this impressive group of speakers so far? What's vital to Littleton's future is to discriminate itself from the other Denver metro satellites. This plan doesn't do that. So the issues with the citywide comprehensive plan, public engagement with the planning board should be expanded. The draft plan has been out for less than a month. The latest revision only released Friday. It is big, it is complex, it requires time to explain it and discuss, and none of us can address our concerns with this plan in four minutes. And I hope you don't expect that we should be able to. It's a legislative product. The process specifically is built to encourage outreach and build public consensus, and there's no reason to rush. A vote by the current city council, who has seen this before, is not a valid reason. In fact, it raises questions and suspicions. There's only going to be one or two more members, and if this plan is not strong enough to explain to them, then it already has failed. So I wanted to say and echo what other people have said. Thank you for your service, and thank you for your work on this, and thank you for continuing the public hearing tonight. What I'd like you to do is carry this through and realize your responsibility and your power, your authority, to engage citizens and build consensus on this product before it proceeds. And the other issue is that essential content is missing and should be added. So extend the schedule, please. Include public education and dialogue sessions. An example I've got is, I think it was mentioned on the sixteenth that perhaps Littleton should have upper-income housing and drop some of the lower income. If that's not an issue that shouldn't be discussed with the public, I don't know what is, consider enlisting a citizen advisory group to help work on and complete this citywide plan. And add essential sections. If you are really tired, and I appreciate that you're probably tired of this document, at least add placeholder sections. But if you're intrigued by the value that this adds, and planning is fun and this dialogue should excite you, then incorporate partial data and stubs that indicate places for future work, just like Wikipedia does. Or do it right. Ask staff for a schedule to complete the missing contents and set up a work plan to do it. So sections to add, there are too many for me to say completely, but one of them is challenges and problems. Identify them and mitigate them. You know, the citizen input, I was there, identified a whole bunch of problems, and this plan doesn't explain at all that you even heard the problems that we identified, much less talk about how the city is going to join together to solve them. And the city management and staff, I'm sure, have descriptions of problems that they already know about. Plus, there are foreseeable future problems, and regional resources can help us identify those. So this plan should also roughly assess possible problems, solutions, and mitigations, prioritize them at a city level, and then flow the actions down to the additional studies, as previously mentioned. And another thing to add is a growth plan, and I won't read these details. What I urge you to do is do no harm. A citywide plan has specific functions... A citywide plan has specific functions, and this one doesn't do anything that the professional standards would call for. I'll send these in so you can read them, and I think I sent an email, but a high-level aspirational plan fails to perform these functions, and it will harm the city. And people have already talked about why. So, I think my time's up, but I appreciate your time and consideration and...
You have thirty seconds.
Okay.
If you want.
So, let me just show this page. There are considerations that I want to see in there. What are the assets that we want to preserve? What are the limits and constraints? Existing problems, foreseeable problems, solutions, mitigations, priorities, and studies that are needed. Flow it down to the small plans. What are success criteria? How are the smaller studies going to know when they're done? And how do they know that their output's going to merge with all the other studies to produce a consistent city? What are the outcomes we want? That's where these aspirations belong. It's a small part of a total plan. And what's possible? You've got to figure out what our limits are and when we can achieve these things. What should we choose and how do we get there? That's a plan. So, thanks again for your consideration.
Good evening. My name's Jerry Hill. I live at fifty-four forty-four South Prince Street. I see Samuelson and Elrod have already voted yes on this. So, why are we, what are we debating? Oh, Samuelson just voted yes. Oh, no, he didn't.
Thank you for pointing that out.
I'm impressed.
My computer...
I haven't been here as long as Paul. I've been here forty-five years. Up until about two years ago, I attended just, well, every single planning commission meeting. I see some familiar faces here. Before that, I watched and watched a participation in the formulation of the other comp plan back forty years ago or whatever. I also, in this last one, I watched the, some of the people here struggle with trying to come up with a decent comp plan that was good for the citizens. What I see missing here is, or what I see in the chain of command, is that staff is running things. Staff has got you on the fast track to a certain extent by saying, "Well, I'll get that before you go ahead and approve it tonight. We'll get you the, we'll get you the height regulations. We'll get that to the city council before they get it. We'll get the corrections made. Rest assured, we'll get the corrections made. You don't even have to look at it. You can just go ahead and approve the final thing." Now, during this, during this forty-five years, I've served on several committees, Littleton Housing Authority and other things. And we had executive directors that would like to slide things before us. And my thought always, get me the final, let me see what I'm going to see for at least a couple of weeks. We finally set it up so that anything that came in our packets came three weeks at a time. So, if I was lazy, or if I was on vacation, or I didn't feel like digging that stuff out and reading it all through, I could do so. I get the impression, I watch you on TV. I asked one of your members tonight, "Should I know you?" And he turned and said, "No," and turned and walked away. So, I don't even know some of the members. I know Mark and I know certainly Kurt Samuelson and Elrod. And, but I see on TV now, I've had health issues. But I think that probably if I worked on the staff, I'd like to have this reduced down to where I have no guidelines at all, virtually no guidelines, and I could just make, I could reduce it down to a page. And I could, and I respect the people that work on the staff, and I've known them for an extended period of time. Some of them, some of them are from Arizona or different places, and I don't know them, but, and I don't have to know them. But I have to think in terms of, some of us have an enduring respect and love for Littleton. And I see us gravitating toward money, 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 money. And I'm not, I'm not downgrading the time that you spend on this because I know how much time it is. And I watched a number of different boards. I've never worked on the planning board, but I've been in the audience and watching in person. This is the first time, probably, I think that I've ever addressed a planning board. But I don't think that the citizens, I think the number-one person or number-one public is a citizen. The citizen recommended, the city council or the planning commission then takes it from there. It goes to the city council, and the city council directs the staff on what direction they want the city should be going. And I don't see that happening now. I see the staff formulating these things, putting it on a fast track, not being able to get it to you in time. They want to get it approved, 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 before we even get the final draft. And we'll, don't worry about the heights of the buildings because we'll get it to the city council for sure. Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Good evening, board, staff. Norm Brown, sixty-eighty-one South Spotswood Street. Thank you for your time, as other people have expressed. I understand the commitment. I think you guys have been doing a good job. And, you know, looking back over the past few months, last few hearings, I think the citywide plan needs to offer enough clarity that all of these activity areas, neighborhoods, and corridors will mesh. You'll refer back to this. If it has enough clarity, I think you guys will know it. And, you know, you have different levels of comfort with it. I appreciate the details about the grammar and punctuation. My mother was an English teacher. Thank you. It's not that hard to get it right. And when you get it wrong, people look at you and go, "Really? You don't know how to contract or to, where to put the apostrophe, how to make things possessive?" The people that know think it looks, makes you look kind of dumb. The Broadstone and the Walmart, going way back, I think, are illustrative. An awful lot of effort expended, both by citizens and by the developers. If the developers were able to aim closer to the mark as to what the city was looking for, they wouldn't waste as much time. We saw that with Broadstone, of course. The city attached a large number of conditions at one point. The developer came back with a revision at the last minute at one time, and it got better and better. Ultimately, of course, it failed. It, it got close. But if they had been able to look at the comprehensive plan, that the neighborhood, if the neighborhood and corridor studies meshed nicely and had been updated, I think it would have been easier for them and easier for the citizens who sort of wake up, realize what is being proposed, and indicate that, "We don't think this works." And it results in failed proposals. So, I think you guys, as I say, have done a good job. I think, all in all, you will know if what is before you is sufficient. And so, I'm basically trusting you with that and just saying, "Carry on." I spent my three years and I got out. God bless those of you who are going to spend longer.
Thank you. Norm. Thank you. That's the end of the sign-up sheet. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak regarding the comp plan?
Good evening. My name is Kathy Messenger, and I live at fifty-seven forty-three Shasta Circle. I'm a citizen and business owner here in downtown Littleton. I'm new to this process and have been attending some of these meetings to learn what goes on in city government. Like yourselves, I care very much about this community and want the very best outcome for the future. So, I asked the board, "Where's the fire? Why the rush?" I pose this question because such a far-reaching document that has impact on so many for decades to come really deserves careful, detailed, specific planning, more public input over a longer period of time, and neighborhood discussion prior to such a vote begs for your consideration. As with anything worthwhile in life, good planning leads to successful outcomes. I support many who have voiced their opinion tonight and urge the planning board to step back and not vote for the comp plan to go to council until more specifics have been addressed. Thank you so much for your time.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you for your input. At this point, we close the public hearing and open it up to the board. Board, questions, answers, discussion, motion, whatever you... Anybody have any comments? You look like you want to talk, Mark.
Didn't want to be the first, but...
I'd like for you to start it off.
Thank you, rest of the board. I think staff tried to tell the people on TV and the people here tonight what this is. This document is not a comprehensive plan. This document is a preamble or a prologue to the comprehensive plan. My favorite British statesman said, "This is not the end. It's not even the beginning of the end. It's the end of the beginning." We have, coming up, a lot of heavy lifting with corridor studies, corridor plans, small-area plans, redoing of the neighborhood plans, activity area plans. That's where the specificity will be coming for the comprehensive plan. Add all those up, we have a comprehensive plan that's comprehensive. This is the preamble. It's loose, yes. It doesn't have a lot of specificity, yes. That is correct. When the documents come in the next three or four years, it will be a real comprehensive plan. I know this because I have worked on many in my ten years previous to this stint, worked on comprehensive, or worked on corridor plans, Santa Fe corridor, Littleton corridor, worked on matrix studies, worked on the downtown area with the nine sub-areas. Worked on a lot of those type of things, and I can tell you that that's where the rubber meets the road, and a lot of time is spent on specific pieces, parts, areas, corners, shopping centers, et cetera. Ninety percent of Littleton is, the interior of Littleton, ninety percent of Littleton is residential, obviously. It's safe. It's owned to make it safe. Nothing's going to happen to the interior of Littleton. It's the exterior, the perimeter areas that, what I call the rub areas, that are under stress and that need our attention. And this comprehensive plan will be spending a lot of time on those rub areas. And of course, as well as meeting with each neighborhood and neighborhoods that aren't in the old comprehensive plan, new neighborhoods that were from nineteen, have been created since nineteen eighty-one, meeting them and listening to them and coming up with their revised, what they want for their neighborhood. It's time we did something here. Nineteen eighty-one was when the comprehensive, last comprehensive plan was voted on and passed. It took, I think, about three years, I've been told, three or four years to do the work. Jimmy Carter was doing his malaise speech when this comprehensive plan was being written. This is preposterous. We need a new comprehensive plan. It's time to move forward with this plan. Or, excuse me, I'll say, it's time to move forward with a preamble so we can get on to the next stages of our work.
Thank you. Carrie.
I would like to say thank you to all the citizens that show up and do their due diligence. Y'all say thank you to us. And thank you to you for showing up and being a good citizen. And thank you to the city board, city staff, for all the work you put into this. So, you're to be applauded as well. I agree with what Mark's saying. The sooner we can get this preamble finished, the sooner we can get on to the task of the details and make this a great city plan for Littleton. So, I'm with you. Let's move on to the heavy-duty stuff and get the details in there.
Okay. First, I would like to say I'm not so sure that we're not too far off where we're at right now, but I do think there's no harm in taking citizen comments and having another study session to review those comments and see if there's anything that we really do need to add to this preamble. And I agree with you on that. It is still just very overarching and a preliminary plan to the city plan, not necessarily the small corridor plans. I've heard a number of comments about Broadstone. Broadstone, I think, missed the mark completely, and I don't think it was anything that was in the comprehensive plan at the time of the small-area plan. I think the developer was just overreaching by far. I don't think that plan or anything near that plan would have passed this board. But I don't see any reason why we can't make some additional comments and add a few additional items to this. I understand they want to get it to city council as soon as possible, but I've been on this board for almost five years. We've seen a lot of changes to this. It's a completely different document than we started with four years ago, and there's no reason why we can't make some adjustments to that.
Yep, thanks. I have, I echo a lot of what Mark, Carrie, even Kurt has said about, you know, this being a preamble. I think it's about getting to the next step of the process and really going into the details of the area plans, the corridors, et cetera. So, I agree with that, but I also do agree, given a lot of the edits that need to be made for grammar, et cetera, that is so critically important. This is a plan that is going to live for thirty years. Let's make sure at least those basics are, they're foundational to me. And it gives credibility and validity to the work that's being done. So, if you miss things like that, one will question, "What else did you really miss that maybe was bigger?" So, I agree with taking the time to do that correctly. And I think that also gives us the opportunity to get more comment from the public because, you know, despite the fact that we have been working on this for a year and a half and there has been public outreach, I do understand the value of, okay, now you brought it all together, now what's it saying? So, we have had one public meeting. This is our second one, but yet we continue to see a lot of letters that came in, as well as those who have presented here, that they still would like more time. It is hard to review a document in just a matter of few days. And again, we've gone a year and so many months. We can go a year and a few, another month or two if needed. So, I would support that. As far as, you know, some things that I have seen and also have heard and relooked at from a different perspective now, there still are a few comments or a few words that are very uncomfortable for, that the public has expressed as being too vague and how is it defined. So, there's probably still an opportunity. I think we've done a great job on definitions. There's maybe one or two that maybe warrant a definition in the back, so I'd like to take a look at those. There was a comment on parking as an issue in downtown. While we don't expressly talk about it here, and again, if we were... While we don't expressly talk about it here, and again, if we were to begin the process of going deep in every single neighborhood, then this, at least piece of the document becomes much broader, and that's exactly the intent of the downtown neighborhood plan. The downtown neighborhood plan does address parking and policies around parking, and it's called out in a section there. The other one, and I just, I'm not well-prepared to address this, there was also a comment about driving or connectivity, you know, I relate it back to connectivity. So it's, you know, driving across the town, et cetera. In our section of connectivity, we talk about pedestrian, we talk about bicycle, but actually we had no, we didn't look at anything from a vehicular and do we have the right connections from a vehicular, or not that I could quickly address as I was skimming through this. So those are just a couple of areas that I'm still, I think we can do just a little bit more work. I think we're ninety percent there. And it's just, I would support giving a little bit more time to address some of those last final details.
Hey, anything?
Yeah, I just echo everyone else's comments that, express my thanks for everybody coming out here and staff's work on this. I would agree, again, with everybody else that this is a vague document, but it's meant to be that way. It's, again, a preface to the corridor plans and the neighborhood plans, which will be, take a lot longer in total to complete than this has taken, and this has taken about four years. I'm still fairly new to this board, and I kind of came in just as they were finalizing one of the drafts in April, and we were pretty far along at that point already. So I don't have a problem with extending the deadline, although there, although there really isn't a deadline, the regular city council meeting happens to be on election night, so that was when it was scheduled to go. But I still have a few minor things as well that I'd like to have changed or updated, and I think if it takes a little longer, that's fine.
Andy?
Overall, I'm very proud of this document. We've spent two years and many, many lifetimes prior to mine getting here, doing it. So in terms of where it's at, I'm very proud of it, but I also don't like turning my paper in until I'm darn sure I'm ready to turn my paper in. That does not mean that I want to make fundamental changes to the document. In fact, I don't. I'm pretty darn close that this is what I want. Having an English teacher at ACC required by law to go review this is maybe what it takes to get this reviewed by an English teacher. So I'm supportive of that as well. So I hereby make a motion therefore otherwise and therefore by that some English teacher with a heck of a better grammar than me do that. In terms of what it is, this is four points and three strategies. This is an idea. This is a direction. This is, this is going to require community involvement to take this forward, and it is a risk I'm willing to take. In the same way that it protects the developer and their ability to be creative and put forth market-driven ideas, it protects us as a city to say, you know what, that hits the mark or that doesn't hit the mark. There's words in here that I'm absolutely in love with because of their vagueness, their ambiguity, high-quality. Architecture is one that comes to mind because I can think of so many different ways to describe crap that high-quality gives me an outlet to defend myself for that. So four points and three strategies in terms of direction. I think we did a good job there. And to be comfortable, if this was to move forward, or I'm going to say when this moves forward is a direction, that if, that if my recommendation to future citizens of the community is that it involves community involvement for the city to be active and vibrant, then that's exactly the message that I'm intending on setting. I expect you to live in this community, do your part, help out, speak up, consider what it is given that situation, and do it. So if the vagueness leads to that as a consequence, then I'm just fine with that. I do like the idea of putting tabs or place letters, and this goes back to finishing my homework before I'm done. I'd ask for some sort of recommendation for a letter or preamble or welcome by the city, city manager, city staff, city council, mayor, to say, this is who we are. One, I'd like to see that inserted. Two, there's nothing in here, especially at the very, very first page, that says, what is Littleton? In one paragraph, not Wikipedia, but what is Littleton? And that could probably lead to seven more years of a conversation here, but I've got my own words that I'd be happy to share if that's the case. I do agree very wholeheartedly that there should be a guide for specific actions to be taken from here. I believe it probably should come from city staff to facilitate the process for us to come down to those SMART objectives. What are the neighborhood objectives? What are they specific measurable? That's where we truly need guidance from in order to get that down and a really metric-driven plan there. So all of those pieces there, as well as to some of the PMI project management techniques that have been recommended, probably would make sense to go through from a staff perspective of some sort of staff training around there. So I would promote, and I'm a full supporter of PMI and their techniques, and would love to see that done. Somebody mentioned earlier, one of the earlier speakers mentioned, this is a rewrite, not an update. I think you nailed it. This is exactly what it is. This is a rewrite, not an update. This is, welcome to 2013. This is what seven people or 23 people consider for 2013. That's where it is. I have a personal bias. I'd like to see the Aldo Leopold quote about integrity put in right up front to there. And in terms of what we're shooting to do with this document and create a unique identity, a sense of place, an elegant Littleton, a special place, a 100-year gem that you find every so often, I think this document is leading us in that direction, and I'm happy for it. So if I would just say that I would, my personal preference is probably, while I would not personally like to do another study session for the simple sake that I don't find them that much fun anymore, I think it is the responsible thing for us to do is to make sure we got our homework done, make sure we got the paper right. I do not expect to offer fundamental changes. I do expect to just say, I am perfectly comfortable that this is my best foot forward. This is what I'm willing to support. This is what I'm willing to do. And at the risk of a new council disagreeing with us, which I personally don't think will happen, but that's their preference and their choice, it's a risk I'm willing to take.
Thank you. I want to give you guys a chance, if you have any comments. Ladonna, do you have any comments?
I like the draft, meaning I like where it's come. I like how we've evolved the draft. I am newer in this process. It was, you know, very close to where it is right now when I came on the board. And I think continuing to work, given what I know this document is, meaning it is, it is the introduction, and that I know the community, the neighborhood plans and the area plans and the corridor plans are really going to provide the specifics for this, that, you know, sooner rather than later, I'd like to get on and move to those because I feel like those are what we really need in order to be smarter and more specific about things like the Broadstones and things like that. But certainly, let's, let's get it right in terms of, you know, everything from, you know, the wordsmithing and having it proofread and that type of thing. I would say I did submit what I thought was a hard effort on my part to really try to push this one step further with a document I sent through about a week ago and didn't hear any comment back from the board, but specifically, I would like the board to consider comments that I put forward that I think push us just a little bit further in terms of, under the goals, the specific land use cases might be considered under certain criteria. And I don't necessarily think that limits us in any way, but it really puts the parameters on what our values are and how each of our goals really get applied to land use cases. But that said, I'm proud of where the documents come, and if we need more study session, you know, and more public comment to get people comfortable with us, I'm about it, but I'm also about getting, moving on sooner rather than later as well so that we can get to what we really, really need, which are the neighborhood and corridor plans.
Eric? Newby?
I agree with Andrew on one thing that he had said and someone had raised about some placeholder status, placeholder sections. You know, one of the things that bothers me is I listen to comments and then I go back and think about reading through this, and I came in a little bit later, which maybe is helpful sometimes because I hadn't spent that much time looking at the document, is there seems like there's a fair amount of confusion between what this document is doing, whether that's a 30,000-foot level and how specific it needs to be. And I agree that if you're dealing with the preface and those kind of initial kind of vision statements, you can't be too specific. But it concerns me if you have people looking at that and they're saying, that should be in there, I'm missing it, and don't understand the document. And it seems to me that, looking at that and considering, is there something missing there that should be communicated to make that more clear? You know, and I can't say I've seen what that is. I want to return to that and look at that a little bit. And then I also agree, I notice sections where we have fonts changing sometimes and titles that I think are simple fixes in one way, but all those things to make that document look cleaner, make it easier to get approved when you go up to the next level. You don't want people focused on those small issues of what the purpose is or how it looks when you really want people to be able to consider the substance at the city council level. So I think that's something to think about and maybe worth another session.
Thank you. Those are all great comments, and I agree with all of them. I want to thank everyone who shared their thoughts. Very good information. I'm of the ball, of the group that says, you know, one more study session wouldn't hurt anything. I mean, this isn't, you know, there is no deadline. I mean, although it's been years. And I, and I, my other reason for that is I don't want to, I want to see a document that has all the i's dotted and the t's crossed. I do think that this document, like it's already been shared, is a great document. It's, it's pretty much there in terms of overall structure. It wouldn't hurt to clarify how, in fact, the citywide plan is going to influence and/or be expanded upon in the neighborhood and the corridor plans. I, for one, am com, I am comfortable with the words transformative and preservation in the same sentence. I think you can preserve your historical, small-town feel and still be transformative in other areas, other areas of the city. You can even be transformative historically. In fact, you can be transformative by making it more historic. And so that has to be explained. And the downtown plan is one of the documents that has already begun to quantify what downtown should look like. Those documents, such as the neighborhood plans, the corridor plans, need to build upon the various goals and policies and get into the specifics of what's important to that community in the, in the Broadstone case. I don't believe, and of course, my memory's not the best most of the time, but the citywide comprehensive plan goals weren't as influential as the Stern Park neighborhood goals were and the Littleton corridor plan goals were. They had seemed to be brought up more often to argue the Broadstone case in terms of density and in terms of neighborhood character and proximity to the neighborhood. In fact, I thought personally that there was conflict between the citywide and the corridor plan and the Stern Park plan. And so one of the things that, by building levels of detail one on top of each other, is to try to minimize some of that conflict. And so if, once we finish this document, which is the preamble to the neighborhood plans, the Stern Park plan, which may not change hardly at all because it's going to be the neighborhood's plan, or they may add some things that would make it stronger to build upon the policies and goals of transformative change or historic preservation or connectivity or, how are you going to do that for that neighborhood? And so that's where the work is, but it doesn't mean we're, we have to finish this. I personally don't believe it has to go to council until it's ready. And believe me, it's not going to council on the fifth to try to get it in front of the board or the council that saw it. We are pretty flexible in our timing. And so if we have to throw another study session, if the board agrees with that, then we do it because we're citizens too. And so I wrote a couple of other things here. I think that was it. So I think we need to, personally, I would support another session to really just make sure that all, all the details, all the wording, all the graphs, the language is proper. So, do I have a motion?
Ask for clarification. Would this be a study session or a open public meeting? Well, it's public, the study session is a public. But...
Public hearing.
Is it a public hearing or is it a study session?
We should discuss that as to, I think... Go ahead.
It should be a study session. We need to digest, first we need, I move, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to move that we schedule another study session at the earliest opportunity for the planning board in their normal course of meeting twice a month, in that we have the complete changes, the upgrades, the updates, the changes that Mark has gone through, and then we discuss citizen input again at that point and determine if we've missed anything and do we need to make additional, make additions to that.
I'll second that very long discussion on that.
Do, a question, do we then have another public hearing after the study session?
Would we have to?
I would probably recommend that you go ahead because it sounds like you could make some substantive changes and always, you know, more public input is better than less, so...
Okay, yes. So we have a motion on the floor to...
Summize.
Yeah. Kurt, can you summarize your motion?
Another study session.
Have another study session. Date to be determined or...
November 4th is your next study session? Would be your next study session date?
No case.
Just a study session.
It's just a study session.
That's fine.
And should we go and set a date?
If you're going to continue this hearing, you need to set a date.
Okay, we need to set a date.
Or you would table it and not set a date, and then we would just have to get the word out. But I think because you've got a number of people here that are interested, I would recommend what regular meeting date you want to bring this back to.
So our next session is what, November 4th?
Next study session's November 4th, and then I think your next meeting would normally be November 11th.
Yeah. Fourth, 12th. Second call. How does the board feel about having enough time to truly digest the comments, including Ladonna's comments that she submitted? I'll confess, I was in Arizona for three days past. I didn't have a lot of time. I want enough time to digest, just make sure that we're not missing something. How much time do you need? Would a week be enough or more?
I have a question about that November 4th date. That's not our normal session date because we meet on the second and fourth Mondays, which would be the 11th, would be our next normal date.
Right, it'd be off your regular schedule.
The fourth is the, fourth is open, we could have a study session.
So there potentially is a conflict here. So if we try to do the grammar corrections in conjunction with continuing to maybe some slight modifications based on pub, based on the public comment and debate amongst ourselves, then we'll have to get it back to an editor for the final. So I guess what I would recommend is November 4th is a study session for us to modify and add any additional input from the public and then hand it over as one, when would, when would be the appropriate time to hand it over for one final edit before we go in front of public again? So I think we make our changes November 4th, hand it over to an editor, and then the final... and then the final gets presented at the public. Otherwise, I think we're going to risk you edit this document that you have now. We may add some things to it unless, you know.
I think what we're hearing from people is we're not giving them enough time between edits and public hearings. So what if we go the 4th and then go to our meeting on the 25th as the next public hearing? Does that give you and them enough time?
But I, but I want to make sure if we make changes in our study session, that staff has enough time to make them all.
Right.
Proof it. I don't want you to feel rushed, so.
This is, it's more important to get this right than get it fast.
So as far as when it goes to public hearing, we can determine that later, right?
Yeah, but I always think it's good to have a deadline. Congress often needs a deadline to get something accomplished. And then just keep in mind, you're moving into the holidays and that will be a concern you'll hear as well. So I, right now, I'm sorry, we're comfortable with November 25th.
Or public?
Or public, with, that is Thanksgiving week.
That's three weeks after the 4th, so.
Yeah.
I think that's good.
But put it out to the public before enough time so them, for them to digest it, so.
So I do think November 4th is a good time for a study session.
So November 4th study session is the motion and it's been seconded by, you seconded that? Okay, let's vote. Okay, motion carries. So that ends the public hearing on the comp plan. Thank you for attending.
Did you set the public hearing date?
That wasn't part of the motion, but we should do another.
Either table it and don't set a date or set a date, continue it and set a date.
Let's set a date.
Let's set a date.
Motion please.
Motion to set November 25th as public hearing.
Second.
Second. Vote. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, next hearing. It's in here somewhere. An ordinance of the city of Littleton, Colorado, amending chapter six, title 10 of the city code regarding floodplain regulations. And this is my first time meeting you.
Right, this is my first time meeting all of you.
Okay.
Pardon me, I've got a little hoarse tonight, but I'm working through that. My name is Bob Deeds. I'm the floodplain administrator for the city of Littleton. I'm also the city engineer, so I wear a couple of hats. So the technical stuff I have to work on just as well as the English grammar portion of it. We have brought to the board tonight an amendment to the floodplain ordinance. We're doing this because the Colorado Water Conservation Board has recently, well, in the last couple of years, have adopted some additional definitions in the floodplain arena. And we need to be gotten up to date with all of that verbiage that they have in our, in their regulations. So we have to adopt those. They, they are a little bit higher than what we currently have. And so that's why we brought this to you this evening. The city of Littleton has participated in the National Flood Insurance Program since 1978. So we've been out there helping the residents of Littleton provide floodproofing and flood resistance to their homes. We are a source of information on floodplains and floodways. If they have questions about how floods will, could affect their property, they come in and talk to us. With me tonight is also Fred Bromberger. Fred is the utilities engineer for the city of Littleton. He is usually my first line of defense when people are calling in for questions. If they can get past Fred, they, they get to talk to me. So Fred usually has, resolves all the technical, technical issue, issues that they might have. The, oop, I better get my glasses on here. We have, as I mentioned, we have the National Flood Insurance Program here in Littleton. And this allows property owners to receive from five to 15% reduction in their flood insurance premiums. So this, having these regulations allow people to qualify for those reductions. If we didn't have these regulations, then they would be bumped by 15% on their premiums. We're required to adopt our new revised floodplain regulations by January 14th of 2014. So that's why I'm here this evening, want to get that on track. I have to take it to the city council next month for their adoption of the regulations. The regulations propose changes and additions to three definitions. They are the critical facilities, other flood areas, and the definition of floodway. In your packet tonight or in the report, I went into a fairly detailed description of those areas. And I'll just kind of hit on those as we go down through them. Critical facilities are like fire departments, police departments, and other essential services, hazardous materials, storage areas, the at-risk population, that would be retirement homes, that type of community. And the storing of, restoring of normal vital services would be like power systems or electrical systems that serve the city of Littleton. We've done a fairly quick inventory of the number of critical facilities located within Littleton. There are approximately 142 properties within the city that might be considered a critical facility. And of those, only about 18 are considered to be private facilities. What had it right, Fred? I believe it's right. The floodplain regulations would change the floodway limit from one foot to half a foot. And I, I don't know if we have the screen that we can shoot up.
Put the overhead on, thank you.
Yes, the overhead. Yeah, oh, you got it on. Okay. This is a little, I don't know how this is going to show up here. As you can see there, there's a definition of floodways and floodplain. Their current floodplain area is shown from across this width. And the floodway is the width internal to that that has depths, generally it starts at about three feet. And we allow development within Littleton to come in or encroach into these sides of the floodplain if they floodproof their properties. And by floodproofing properties, we mean they cannot have anything below the 100-year flood level. And they have to construct a finished floor one foot above the flood elevation of the 100-year flood. So there is, there is some opportunities for people to develop in this encroachment area. And, and they cannot, if they move into this area, then they cannot increase the flood depth of the floodway by more than half a foot.
Can you explain how that? Go ahead.
Could you repeat that sentence, please?
Okay.
Pretty critical.
By, by construction within the floodplain, they're able to move into the encroachment area and fill in those areas as long as they don't increase the flood depth by more than half a foot.
In what span, right immediately adjacent to that property or for a space after that?
It, that property could be well within the floodplain.
Right.
They could have floodwaters that are going around them. So it's just really what effect that they have in the development of their property.
But is that increase, increase height of the flood level for the entire floodplain width or within?
No, it's, it's just the floodway portion.
The floodway portion, okay.
Of the floodplain. And that's really the high-risk area. We used to call that, if the, this line right here between encroachment and flood, floodway used to be where the flood velocity was greater than three feet per second. And three feet per second is more than enough to knock you off your feet. So by getting out in, in these areas, you could calculate using the hydraulics of the cross-section velocities of the water in those areas. So we would come up with a line there and then we, in the floodplain, we will then define the floodway within the floodplain.
Do you mind if we have open discussion as you're going?
Sure, that's fine.
I, I think
Well, why don't you let me, let me finish.
Go ahead and finish it and tell us when you're ready for open discussion.
Okay, save your questions just for, hold on. Could basically have hit it all. Oh, we've included a new term called other flood areas and I wanted to mention that. We normally regulate with the 100-year floodplain. And the Fed now are pushing for the 500-year floodplain. And of course, this will be beyond the 100-year floodplain. But they're not requiring us to regulate to that yet. And I think that in the news that, that we heard during the flooding that occurred north of Denver, you heard to mention a 500-year floodplain. There was a time when the federal government, FEMA, didn't think that, didn't think that it rained above 9,000 feet. They thought it snowed above 9,000 feet. So when we started getting floods generated by nine-inch rainfalls up around Estes Park, they really couldn't understand that from Washington, what's happening out here. But that's, you know, what happens, so. It's important that the city of Littleton adopt the amendments to the floodplain regulations. If we don't, then we jeopardize having reduced insurance premiums. And they could penalize us in other areas if we, if we don't adopt these regulations. Staff recommends that the proposed amendments to the floodplain regulations be forwarded to city council with a recommendation of approval by the board. And now I'm open for some questions.
Thank you. I think the, and maybe not, I don't know if all the board members understand that the dynamics of a floodplain. My knowledge, and tell me if I'm wrong. You can put a house or a building in the floodplain that you have hatched there. And you said as long as it doesn't cause the floodway to increase by more than half a foot?
Yes.
And what it's doing is it's displacing the water that was in the floodplain and it's pushing it out into the channel.
Into the floodway.
It used to be a foot, which was more leeway.
More leeway.
Allowed more water. Now it's only half a foot. So now there's a quicker impact.
So, and then what's a result from that is that we're not going to be able to let people move into the encroachment area as much as we could have before.
Yeah. And in the floodway, you can't allow any buildings, correct?
Pardon me?
In a floodway, there are no buildings.
No buildings in the floodway, that's correct.
Right.
And the floodway is the?
The middle area.
The middle area.
No buildings there and in the gray, no people.
In the gray, we can have buildings and we can flood, we can fill in those areas. But they can only be filled so that the first floor elevation of the structure is one foot above the floodplain elevation.
The 100-year floodplain.
The 100-year flood elevation.
But this only affects new buildings, not existing buildings, is that correct? Did I read that?
It would, it would affect new construction, yes.
And existing construction that's going to have significant changes to it, over 50% or something like that?
Yes, if they, say if they, we had a flood or damage to that building. A building was damaged with a fire and 50% of that value was, was lost. And they were, we would not allow them to go in and rebuild that, that structure.
So that's only, why are you specifying as a result of some damage? What if a building just wants to be remodeled or something like that? Does it have to be because of the cause? Does the cause have an impact or an influence on, on this criteria?
Yes, they, they, we wouldn't allow just to go in and improve the building. Am I right on that, Fred? Yeah, the 50%.
For any reason? So they just felt like remodeling, changing, I don't know, single family into multi? I don't know, something like that, that probably wouldn't happen, but.
So if they added a second story or a third story?
Yeah, that would be a good example.
That was 50% of the building.
They're good questions. We'd probably be, end up being in front of the board again with, with our regulations and asking you all to make a, a determination of that.
Because you can change 50% of the building but not change the shape of it.
Yeah, you could, like you're saying, you could add second and third story on to some structure and not change the first floor at all.
And that wouldn't change the encroachment then either, right?
No.
So you might want to call it a footprint rather than a footprint change versus a going up.
That's true, yes.
So additions, say if you wanted to add an addition sideways out, then, then you would have a problem. You'd have to conform to these rules.
Unless it was cantilevered or something.
And what you do find, yes, that's true.
You need to be an architect.
People want to add a patio or something or a deck.
Yeah.
You find out that they're out there hanging it over into that area, but it's not down in it to cause an effect on the floodplain.
So, sorry, I just want to call out this sentence because I, this is exactly what we're trying to get clarity on. It says, page two, the first paragraph, one, two, three, four lines down. The proposed regulations would require new or substantially improved improvements, parentheses, improvements, where the costs exceed 50% of the value of the existing structure. So that, that's very broad. I mean, you can easily get to 50% of the value.
That would cause you to elevate your building.
That would trigger, yeah.
That would trigger this, yes.
Just by the cost being 50% greater?
Pardon me? Is that what I read or heard?
What it says?
Where the cost exceeds 50% of the value of the existing structure.
Yeah, so if, so a third story on an already two-story building, that would be 50%. I mean.
Or an expansion could be 50% or I completely gut the building and put high-end fixtures.
The addition only has to be a third, the total value of the new structure, you know what I mean? So it's 50% of the existing structure. So if you have a two-story building and you add a third story, that's only a third of an addition, but it's 50% of the existing structure. Is that correct?
Right.
I mean, simplifying.
The cost is the more important because you could, like she said, just go in and gut the building and put in a high-end fixtures and redo it and increase your cost by 50%. That's cost.
Easy.
Not any addition whatsoever.
But, but this isn't open to interpretation, is this the federal rule?
This is the federal regulations.
Oh, that's what the Oh, that's what the federal government says.
Exactly the way they're reading.
Ah, no wonder.
Let them hold the hearings.
They are here to help us on this, so.
That could change. But, but not doing this also could increase the, the flood insurance for people that are already in that floodway or the, the flood zone. If, if we don't do it, it would increase their insurance.
It could potentially, potentially increase their flood insurance premiums, yes. If we don't adopt these regulations.
You said there are 142 properties in the?
We've identified 142 properties that are.
Do you know how many are residential structures?
Uh, I don't know if we've, Fred, did you sort it down to residential versus commercial?
Can you reiterate again with that numbers, because you had two different numbers. You had one in the thousands and then you went down to 142. What was that exactly?
We have, uh, we have, I believe it was 420, I'd have to find the number again.
402.
I'm throwing numbers out there.
420. Properties that, part of the property or the building is located within the floodplain. I don't know where I had that. Oh, right here in the second paragraph on page two. And in city, there are a total of approximately 402 property parcels where at least a portion of the property is located within the floodplain. What we found out is banks, uh, when they want to give someone a loan on their, on their house mortgage, if any part of that floodplain is in the lot, they require flood insur- insurance on the property. They'll, and that's a lot of calls we get from people who say, but my house is three feet above the street and the street overtops into my front yard and they are requiring me to buy flood insurance. Well, the only option the homeowner has is to go shop flood insurance some, or his mortgage from another bank. And, you know, it's nothing I can help him with. The banks make their own decisions on what they will, uh, provide, uh, mortgages to.
What, what happens to the rest of us who don't live in a floodplain? Do we all now have to bear a brunt for this flood insurance cost?
No, if you can, you can purchase flood insurance on any property that you feel as though might be susceptible to flooding. We don't have regulations on all the water courses through town. We have nine major water courses that contribute to the South Platte River. And you could have a situation where properties drain into your backyard, which could cause you to be flooded. And if you had that condition, you know, you would want to go to your insurance agent and say, you know, I'd like to carry in flood insurance. But it's not required by the bank that I carry it, but I feel more comfortable in, in having flood insurance on my home.
We, we are all subsidizing it already.
Yeah.
The federal taxes.
Uh, does the city bear any liability for these properties? Uh, generally, I'm.
No.
Probably just fine with all this, but the city doesn't increase its liability by, by enacting or not enacting this? The city carries no financial risk in this?
No, we don't, but we, uh, we do notify the property owners annually, those that are within the floodplain. A letter is sent out by the Urban Drainage Flood Control District to all those residences. So they know whether they're in the floodplain or not. And if they want to find out more about it, they can come in and talk to us. We'll, we'll give them the lowdown of how far they're in.
Okay, Madonna.
So FEMA provides the flood insurance.
Yes.
Correct, and currently we are in compliance with the FEMA regulations. It is just the, um, CWCB changed their regulations.
Yes, they.
To be more strict and therefore we're not in compliance with them.
That's correct.
But we are in compliance with FEMA regulations currently.
Yes, but we need to be in conformity with both.
Do you have a motion?
Wrapped.
Well, I've got a couple of questions.
Okay.
Obviously, this includes our, our massive river there called the Platte. Uh, does this also include, uh, Lee Gulch, Little Dry Creek, all those?
Yes, all of them.
All of them.
We have Big Dry Creek on the north.
Yeah.
Littlest Creek goes right through the middle of downtown.
Okay, I don't need all of them.
Oh, okay, yes, all nine of them.
Okay, uh, the second question is, uh, I was working on a project, I think on Gallup Street, where stormwater would, uh, sweep across, uh, other, any of those kind of areas? It would sweep across and actually come onto the property, so it would cause a bit of a problem when my client wanted to do an addition. Are those kind of areas covered by this or is that just a, a local issue?
That would be a local issue.
Okay.
Because that would be beyond the floodplain. There could be hazards beyond the floodplain.
Yeah, just, you know, impervious services, the road can't handle it, the sewer system can't, or storm sewer can't handle it. It overflows, okay, that's not included.
Okay, I'd go into more of those, like, we'll get in and talk about backward draining cul-de-sacs that cause problems for people and those kind of special flooding situations that we'll talk to property owners about and advise them that you need to get, remove this, these obstructions between you and your neighbor's house because that's where the water goes. You know, they can't understand that until the day that it happens, then it's like, oh, that's where we thought it drained.
Thank you, my apologies, this, this is a public hearing, therefore it is open to the public and I'd like to open it up unless you have any more comments.
Fine.
We have two people on the list who'd like to speak, so I'm opening up the public hearing. Two. Joyce, straight?
I'm sorry, I was on the ball.
Oh, are you here for the liquor? The comp plan?
Yeah.
Okay, how about Norm Brown?
You're here for the liquor?
For the liquor. Norm, you're here for the liquor?
We're all here for the liquor.
I signed the correct one. I have personal experience and Mr. Deeds is probably familiar with Ms. Woods, uh, who administers the floodplain in Greenwood Village. It is, uh, immediately adjacent to Littleton, uh, the section I'll speak about, it's Big Dry Creek. I would suggest to you perhaps, uh, well, let me refer you first to page two, the last paragraph, where the staff report tells, uh, you and the citizens, it might be more expensive for a critical facility, uh, property owner to develop or substantially improve. I, it is a little bit casual about, um, additional expense. And when you start to calculate that cost number up, up there, our project, which they just started setting forms for the footer today, costs $27,000 to mitigate the asbestos in the drywall mud in the building. It's a single-family residential. You have, um, along Big Dry Creek east of Littleton High School, several properties in Littleton that were built in the same era. So the cost can escalate rather quickly if you run into something like asbestos and it's likely to be in those buildings. So this could have an effect. What I would suggest, and as I said before, I think you guys are doing a good job and, and I trust you. The, you have a proposed motion. I would ask that some language, uh, in this be added, that you make it conditional that some relief could be offered to property owners regarding height limitations if indeed the property is required to be elevated a bit above the floodplain. You have height limitations, uh, for various categories of zoning. And so if, because of the floodplain in the new regulations, you require that building to move up a foot, I think it's fair to allow an additional foot in, uh, height for affected properties. Also, um, in our instance, it's an oddly shaped lot, it's, uh, almost an acre and a quarter, but the setbacks are difficult. We ended up redesigning what we were doing, but, uh, traditionally, a single adjustment from the, uh, a single variance from the Board of Adjustment might be considered, usually not a second one. But if you have moved the floodplain and people are proposing a project, I would suggest you, that the staff provide language, again, for affected properties, that multiple variances might be allowed. So you, and then that would go, of course, to the Board of Adjustment, but you might have a five-foot intrusion into one setback and maybe a 10-foot in another one, whereas most properties, you wouldn't allow multiple considerations. So this would mitigate, uh, for affected properties and I don't know of any specifically. We didn't get relief on either of those items, it would have helped. It wasn't significant and I could have pursued it. Uh, our property happens to be in Greenwood Village, it's that one little corner that, uh, is actually on this side of Clarkson, west of Clarkson. But again, there are multiple properties, not just along Big Dry Creek, but in Littleton that might have difficulties with these regulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to address this hearing?
I have a question for Glenn perhaps, uh, what he just spoke about, could the property owner come before us on a case-by-case variance rather than writing in to this federal proposal?
I think, actually, he did, he mentioned Board of Adjustment and that it would go to the Board of Adjustment to change setbacks or height requirements. Um, but I believe there are some cases where we state in the case of, in fact, I think it has to do with disabilities. If you have to outfit your house with a certain disability and that encroaches in the setback, that's a reason to consider a variance, um, but you still go through that step, you still go through the board. So, um, unless Kristen disagrees, that's what I would envision that becoming.
No, that's a correct, it would go in front of the Board of Adjustment and generally some sort of unusual, um, you know, issue with topography or something related to the land, um, is usually one of the criteria for granting, uh, the variance because it's not sort of a self-imposed, um, situation.
So before we move any further, any, I don't see any other one else, I'm closing the public hearing. Do you have a motion?
I move the approval of the proposed resolution recommending approval of the ordinance amending the chapter six of the zoning regulations, floodplain regulations to be approved.
Second, second, any discussion? Yes, Serena, go ahead.
I actually have some, um, questions for staff, but, um, so I feel like damned if you do, damned if you don't. So if we pass this ordinance, we force property owners to take action. So if, if they're planning on doing changes, et cetera, so we're, we're directing or dictating to property owners, you do have to do this. Is that, am I understanding that correctly? If, if the situation arises new or existing on the criteria, we are dictating to the property owners, you have to make this change.
Yes, they would have to make those changes to their plans to protect it from the flood condition.
Sorry, time, sorry.
Is there a timing?
When they have to do it? How soon do they have to do it?
Well, they would do it with, they would submit their plans with their proposed modifications to their house. And at that time.
It would get rejected.
We would hold the building permit until they could show how they're protecting that, that property from the floodplain.
So existing properties are not required to upgrade?
No, no, they would not be required.
Unless they do the 50% thing.
Unless they ran into the 50% thing.
So, uh, just help me with a scenario where, um, Kurt was saying that, um, if you put a bunch of new fixtures in, change the granite countertops and you got to that 50% level pretty quickly without changing the structure?
I don't know if you'd get to that 50% of the value of the, of the structure by changing the kitchen.
So however you're going to do it, without changing the structure below the house, you get to that 50% level, then all of a sudden they have to cha- make changes that they weren't even approaching, is that correct? Because they have to change from displacing a foot of water to only displacing a half, a half a foot, is that right? So they'd have, it might even cost them another?
They would already be in the floodplain.
Sure, sure.
As long as they're not doing something with that structure that expands it horizontally, then, you know, they're not having to make those changes.
But you're, but if they get to 50% and they're at a foot displacement, they would then have to change to a half-foot displacement? Or what you're saying is they wouldn't really have to make a change then?
New construction is required to protect the half a foot.
Right.
Existing structures would stay as they are.
Unless they reach that 50%.
Unless they were damaged to that 50%, I believe.
Of course, that 50% is anything that's subject to permitting. If you change your countertop, you're not going to.
No, I, I didn't mean that, I just meant if, if you're, so say they add another story and they get to the 50%, but initially, they weren't, they weren't planning on changing the foundation or the structure in the floodplain at all and now all of a sudden they have to, they might have to spend another 50% just to change that.
Unfortunately.
But I don't think we have any leeway.
It's a federal language.
Yes, that's the federal.
Now, can we ask Congress to change it by next week? They can do that, can't they?
A special session.
I think that's the language that makes me uncomfortable.
Yeah. Do we have any leeway in this respect? I'm, I've done kitchen and bathroom remodelings that are more than my net worth, uh, many times over. Greenwood Village, for instance, Cherry Hills Village. Can, can the city do, have a little wiggle room and, and say that 50% improvement is a square footage improvement? Not, not cosmetic things, uh, like bathrooms, kitchens, uh, raising the ceiling, uh, vaulting the ceiling in their, in their living room, that type of thing. That really, you know, that can add up to over 50% of the value of the structure. That should not kick in the, the necessity to make changes.
I, I think we'll take a look at that. You guys have brought up some good points about development of properties that are already in the floodplain. And I really didn't look at it that closely. I was more concerned about new people coming into the floodplain with, with the structure rather than someone who's already in it and they're making some vertical change to their property or some internal modification. And I need to look at that a little bit, that's, and I, I would look at that before it would go onto the city council.
Can you send us a memo as to what you come up with, please?
Yes, I can.
So we have a motion on the floor regarding approving this regulation, so. Can we amend that emotion with something that says that Mr. Deeds will adjust that? Can we amend a, an emotion? Or do you think it's okay going forward as is?
My, my, my guess is, is it's written correctly and I think it's trying to protect people or protecting all of us from somebody increasing the value of a house that's in a hazard area. So I think it's probably written correctly, that it's not just expanding the structure, it's actually increasing the value of something that's in a hazard area that if it gets taken out, I guess we all pay, um, to replace it.
I think we need a vote on the motion and if we, if you're not supportive of it, then vote likewise, but. Vote. And, Serena?
Okay. So Kerry's?
Okay.
We would like to be advised.
I'm going to have to spend a little more time before I go to city council next week, so, on first readings.
I would recommend, I don't know if you've gotten, um, some of these private property owners, direct input from them. I would advise that you get some of that, um, you know, before you go in front of council so that at least you have advised some of the people that would be most impacted by this.
I'll try to do that, thank you.
Because again, this wouldn't have had a sign on every single property that would have been affected, so they wouldn't know necessarily that they were coming, you know, this was coming forward and would affect them other than maybe reading it on the website, right?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, at this time, we're going to take a five, 10-minute recess. We have one more hearing. We can, you can put a motion.
Quick, can we make it quick?
I don't know. Uh, five, 10-minute recess.
Five, five-minute recess.
Five-minute recess. Five-minute recess.
Five minutes.
Yeah. We're on a roll here tonight.
We are.
I got the, okay, there we go.
There we go.
So the next hearing, the last hearing, is an ordinance of the City of Littleton, Colorado, amending Title X of the City Code concerning breweries, distilleries, wineries, and emissions. And so let the staff present.
Good evening, Planning Board. Ernie Rose, Senior Planner, Community Development. I'm here to present the ordinance related to breweries, distilleries, wineries, and emissions. The policy question before you tonight is, should the city amend the existing land use regulations by allowing breweries, distilleries, and wineries in certain commercial and industrial zone districts? Just to give you a little history, we started getting contacted by entrepreneurs in these businesses, and we were having a difficult time finding spots for them because it fell in our manufacturing categories. And in, they preferred to locate in locations like downtown or a shopping center would be better for their business models. And under our current law, land use regulations, it would not have been permitted. So on August 27th, City Council had a study session where we presented some findings related to these businesses, and found, and the council directed us to bring forward an ordinance that defined breweries, distilleries, and wineries, and allow them to operate in zone districts subject to certain standards. The business models for these, they need to have manufacturing, wholesale, retail sales, distribution, storage, and an onsite tasting room. So knowing that, like stated earlier before, they were already allowed under our code in I-1 and I-2, the B-3 zone district adds or already allows a little light industrial, which these are right on the borderline of light industrial as far as impacts. Well, the, so we made them permitted uses in those zone districts. In the CA, B-1, and B-2, we made them permitted land uses with a tasting room, retail sales room with standards. And the standards were intended to prevent a large manufacturing facility downtown or in a shopping center, and to ensure an active storefront in those pedestrian-heavy areas. The one thing that we found about these, these businesses are heavily regulated, and there's a significant amount of state regulations. To your question earlier today, they do have to have liquor licensing, but it's all through the state. Those regulations include productions in gallons, barrels produced per year. Those are regulated, and they kind of separate these from larger breweries, distilleries, and wineries than the amounts produced. They have packaging and alcoholic beverages, requirements, distribution, and onsite consumption. Just to give you an example of, this is kind of the small scale of these particular type uses. This is a distillery that was given to us by one of the guys that inquired about that, or these businesses. This is an example of what the winery equipment may look like. And then the brewery equipment, it's just these small kettle systems. Now, there's different versions of that, but this is the, they're kind of, the point of this is they're very small scale. So what we did is we went in and amended the code sections, and Section 10-1-2 specifically, we defined breweries, distilleries, and wineries. And these were used to establish new land use categories, and we also defined tasting, retail, sales room. 10-3-1, we created a new land use signal, symbol, which is in the table, or it's the index to the table, and it's PS. And it, PS then references the required standards for breweries, distilleries, and wineries located in the CA, B-1, and B-2 zone districts. Additionally, we amended the land use tables. 13.5-1 included a comment about alcohol distillation. So we had to amend that to accept the distilleries defined by this amendment from that alcohol distillation. One difference between the two, you could have a larger distillation facility for alcohol in the industrial zone districts than by this. This is small scale versus large scale. We then added the land use categories to the table, and then they're numbered, 13.5-3 for brewery, distillery, and winery, 13.5-4 for brewery, distillery, winery with a tasting room, tasting slash retail sales room. One of the things we found in researching this was that they do emit an odor that has been compared to oatmeal or a bakery. And our current code didn't prohibit any odor. So we amended that section of code to restrict emissions of odor that leave the site of the property. And then 10-4-16 is the new section we created that includes the standards that these businesses can locate in the CA, B-1, and B-2 zone districts, and the requirements are at least 30% or 1,000 square feet of the building must be devoted to the tasting slash retail sales room. It must be oriented toward the public facade, and the side limits, size limit of the facilities is in B-1 and B-2, 10,000 square feet, and in CA, it's 6,000 square feet. So with that, staff recommends approval of the attached resolution, which would forward a favorable recommendation, recommendation to City Council, and I'll take any questions you may have.
Let's go ahead and do the public comment, and then we'll do questions at the end.
Okay.
That's all right with everybody? Open up the public hearing. We have two people on the list, maybe three. And the first one is Ryan White.
Angie wasn't going to speak.
Oh, yes, you said no, you're not going to speak. Thank you for clarifying that. And Angie Hunt also is here in support but not speaking. Correct? Okay. And is there anyone else who'd like to address the Board regarding this? Okay. Close the public hearing and open it up to the Board for questions and discussion or a motion.
I get a couple of questions. It doesn't, from what I read, or maybe you can just tell me, are you limiting the amount? I saw there's a limit to 10,000 square feet, and the retail establishment has to be a minimum of 1,000 square feet or a certain percentage?
30%.
30%. Are you limiting the amount of liquor that they can, or beer or wine that they can create, or the size of containers? Because the breweries that I've been to, the small craft breweries that I've been to, don't have containers that small. They're much larger than that. You know, restaurants. And that, not that they're intrusive, some of them look very nice, and they kind of have it as an amenity, but I'm just curious if you have a...
Well, the state regulations regulate the amounts produced by these, and that's how they're separated. So the smaller ones can only produce under a certain amount. What you may be familiar with is a restaurant that has beer with it. Well, that is a brew pub, which is defined in our current liquor code, and that is not what these are.
Okay, okay, great. And then one other thing, on the amended emissions, the original, it looks like, was every use shall be operated in a manner so that no heat, odor, smoke, air pollution, toxic, noxious, or corrosive fumes or gases, et cetera, are emitted, period. And you've amended it so that they can emit all those things, radiation, gases, fumes, as long as it's not continuous outside of their boundary, or if it's inside their boundary, it can be continuous. So they could emit air pollution, toxic, noxious, corrosive fumes, as long as it's within, I mean, that's how it reads.
Correct.
So, okay.
That's not the intent, though, right?
Well, but it reads that way.
Is it written, or is it not?
The intent, I think, is for, to be, you know, if it's not harmful, that they could admit it, as long as it's not continuous.
Well, yes, that's, that is definitely one point. Like, a bakery emits an odor, barbecue...
But it's not harmful ever.
Right.
Kurt?
I'm Mark, sorry.
Yeah, I'll talk. Go ahead, go ahead, Mark. Call me whatever you want, as long as you call, right?
I'm looking at you.
Just want to clarify something that was misstated twice now. Tasting retail sales room is a 30% of the total floor area of the facility, or 1,000 square feet, but you keep leaving off whichever is greater.
Correct.
Okay, so there is, could be quite a bit more than 1,000 square feet. Question I have concerns, let's see, the definition of PS. Chapter Three, land uses, you have, front page, there's definitions of, you know, there's P, there's C, conditional use, H, permitted as a home occupation, blah, blah. There is a P and there's a S. You're having a new designation called PS. I see no definition in the write-up here. What is the short definition that you will be including in the front page of Chapter Three for PS?
The definition of PS would be pursuant, wouldn't it, to section, it stands for pursuant to section...
So permitted.
No?
Permitted with standards, right?
Yeah.
Mark, where are you in this document? Where are you?
I'm sorry?
What are you quoting?
He's in the code.
Oh, he's in the code.
He's in the code. Okay.
Chapter Three of the zoning code.
In the index there.
So have you figured it out, or what is it? You should have this for council when you, when you, you should have the definition, it should be no more, no more than, it's like seven or eight words or so.
Actually, I, I'm the one who came up with PS. I was thinking, okay, what should we call it? And I thought, well, this would be permitted with standards. So, so it would say PS, and then it would, it'd be permitted, it'd be like this, it'd be permitted pursuant to Section 10-4-16. That's what it would say, yeah.
Add that to the write-up with council.
Right, right.
That's fine. Thank you.
Anyone else have a comment, question?
I do. So, and maybe you addressed this and I didn't hear it. So in, under the staff analysis, there's page one, the second paragraph, the first sentence, second sentence, oh, no, first sentence, breweries, facilities, et cetera, et cetera, with a tasting retail sales room subject to standards. What are those standards, or where are those standards documented?
They're listed further back in your document in the ordinance, under Section, well, it's 10-4-16. It'd be page five of the resolution, the ordinance is attached to the resolution, but it's page five of that document. And that's the listed standards right there.
Oh, okay.
Madonna or editor? Kerry or Kerry? Okay. My question would be, or not, it's not really a question. 10,000 square feet is the large, 6,000 is the small, in this floor area?
Correct.
Can you give me an example of what 10,000 square feet of retail is?
Well, there wouldn't be 10,000 square feet of retail.
Or of a building. What is it, like a 20 by 50, or obviously?
I'm not sure what...
It's like a Circle K, or, I mean, a 7-Eleven, or...
Well, I wonder if Ranky's wouldn't be close to 10,000 square feet. That whole building, maybe... That whole building may be close, I would, that would be the best example.
Hundred by hundred, you know?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's probably about the size, yeah. Or like a Safeway, or in our shopping centers, those abandoned safeways, they'd be somewhere close to that, I would think, maybe a little larger.
You have a motion?
Clarification, is 10,000 as big as the retail space, or the whole brew pub or brewery, winery itself?
The maximum of the facility is...
10,000, okay.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve Planning Board Resolution Number 13-11.
Second.
Any discussion? All vote? Motion, Kerry's?
I don't like the wording in that.
That's the last public hearing, there is no general business, there are no staff reports, comments. Have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second, anyone? I can second it.
Bye.
Second, second.
All approve, let's vote.
Let's see, Dave doesn't want to go home.
No.
We don't need to...
To adjourn.
You're getting feisty over there.
Remember the one time I voted "knocked" it?